Welcome to the October 12, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Planning Commission. It's now called to order. We'll now take a moment for silent prayer or meditation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Vice Chair Lewis.
I'll start with Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Here.
Commissioner Heng.
Here.
Vice Chair Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Becerra.
Here.
Tonight, we have the meetings for the Regular Planning Commission meeting on September 28, 2021, and from the Special Meeting on October 4, 2021. Does anyone have any changes to either set of minutes? The minutes for both meetings are approved as submitted. We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to non-hearing.
Madam Chair, oral communications.
There were no oral communications on here. Do we need to do oral communications?
Yeah, we can ask the audience if there's anyone that'd like to speak.
I'm sorry?
We can ask the audience if there's anyone that would like to speak.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay, we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to non-hearing items. Paulina, who will present the staff report?
Madam Chair, Joanne, our Planning Manager, will provide the staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission and also members of the public.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
I think your mic is off.
Can you hear me now? Is it better? Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the public and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you is a sign administrative review application for a building identification sign, which is also a wall sign. The item before you, that's within the Planning Commission's purview, is to ensure that the approved sign meets the city's municipal code standards. Within the Planning Commission's purview, the Planning Commission may only review the approved signs based on its aesthetics, which is color, size, location, and/or font. The Planning Commission may not regulate content. The project site is located on the northeast corner of Berenca Street and Garvie, East Garvie Avenue North. The proposed sign is located to be installed on the Berenca Tower on 100 North Berenca Street, on its south side, which is the side that is highlighted with the red line on the projector. The request is for a new 249-square-foot building identification wall sign. The application was first submitted on July 29, 2021. It was approved by the Community Development Director on August 5, and an appeal was filed on August 13, 2021. The proposed sign is, to be exact, is 249.37 square feet. The maximum allowed sign area in this side of the building is 543.75 square feet. This is based on the maximum sign area calculation of three square feet for every, three square feet for every lineal foot of building frontage, with a 5% increase for every floor above the fourth story. The building frontage along Garvie Avenue is 125 feet. So that equals a maximum allowed sign area of 543.75. On the screen is a rendering of what the sign would look like when installed on the south side of the building. The sign is internally illuminated, channel letters. The text is a white color, similar to the color of the Jolly Bee sign located on the east and west side of the same building. If this staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 21-6100, approving Sign Administrative Review 21-01, denying the appeal and upholding the Director's decision. This is based on the fact that this sign is within the city's municipal code standards, and the color and material is consistent with the existing sign on the building. If the Planning Commission has any questions, I'm available to answer.
I have a question.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for the staff? Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes. I'm looking at Jolly Bee's letter, and it says that we were previously informed by the city that no more signage will be allowed on the south side as Jolly Bee took over all the signage, square footage on the east and west. Therefore, we did not bother to file for signage earlier. All things considered, we rather that no further signage be granted on the south side facade to maintain the clear aesthetic of the structure. Do we know that if, the staff, can staff, does staff know if Jolly Bee ever asked this question?
We, I don't recall informing anybody that they are not allowed to have a sign on that location. Jolly Bee did attempt to file an application for a sign on that same location the following day after the Director had approved the proposed signage, and they were informed that the city has already approved another sign on that same location when they attempted to submit the application.
So when they first, did the first application, they never, do you recall if them ever wanting to put Jolly Bee on all four sides of the building, or?
Well, when they first initially submitted the first application, there were two, they were in a similar situation, two different businesses occupying tenant space within the same building. At that time, it was City National Bank and Jolly Bee. They submitted an application for signage on the, on the same building, at the same location, and at that time, it was submitted, one application was submitted a day after the other. So action wasn't taken by the city on any application when that was done, and that dispute was resolved by the property owner then.
Okay. So just to clarify, the applicant at one point did apply for that side, but it was, yeah, Man City National at that time?
It was not the same side.
It was not the same, okay.
Initially, they came with the east side, and then the following year, they came with, I'm sorry, initially, they came with the west side, and then the following year, they submitted the application for the east side.
Joanne, are those where the signs currently are right now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You have any other questions? Commissioner Gutierrez? Is that it? Commissioner Williams?
None at this time.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chair, if I may also add, that in, in 2019, the Director at that time, because it was, it was a building identification sign, he had made the determination that two different companies cannot occupy the top portion of the building. However, when the application for PK Schreifer was submitted, I was directed to contact the city attorney's office to, because there is case law prohibiting the city to regulate content, and the city attorney's office did confirm that we cannot regulate content. So we cannot say what name is on the building. We can only regulate the size and color and aesthetics.
Not necessarily.
Well, I just want to add that I was one of the planning commissioners that approved the Jolly Bee sign at the time, and according to my understanding at the time was that buildings in West Covina is only allowed one signage. Now, this Jolly, Jolly Bee was the only sign on this particular building. There were some issues that they were going to put on the east side of the building, but the east side of the building is not completely, like, square or straight. It's curved a little bit. That's why they're not able to put the Jolly Bee, the big picture, on the east side of the building. So they end up putting it on the west side of the building, which is at the current positions right now. And then prior to this particular sign, if you notice that there is another building that is close to the In-N-Out Burger, In-N-Out Burger, they were trying to get the two signage in, and they were having a hard time at the time because the planning commissioners and also the direct, the old director at that time was stating that there was only one identification signage for a building. So I'm not sure how or how this came about in terms of approving two identification buildings, because if you look around in West Covina, besides all the building, well, identification building only has one signage, like the Chase Building, which is the other second biggest building close to this one, only has a Chase Building sign versus the other buildings around, you look around, it only has one signage. The other one that I know and got approved was the building just recently, next, a couple years back, next to In-N-Out Burger, there was a nightclub there. I forgot which building, the name of that building. I'm sorry?
Wings?
No.
It was something else after that.
I think you're right, Madam Chair, it was Wings. It's that building across from In-N-Out on Garvie South.
Correct. And even with that particular, because the building at that time, we decided to approve it for two signage in that particular building because it's such a long stretch, and the building is a lot lower in terms of elevation, and because of the long stretch, you can't really see from one side that that ID the building per se. So according to my knowledge, for the last five or six years or so, and prior to the Planning Commission that's been there for years, really, the buildings only has one signage that I am aware of. So I don't, in, in West Covina, so this would be the second one that if we were to approve tonight, this would be the second signage on a building, or two, two signage in a building to identify the building.
Commissioner Heng, so I believe that the building that you're referring to next to the In-N-Out, I think Joanne maybe can clarify, that one was given different, or more than one signage because they, one of the units did have a door that opened to the front, so that was their front door, or their facade to their, to their unit. In regards to why we are now allowing a second, quote-unquote, a sign on this building from a different business is because our city attorney's office has clarified that we can't regulate content, which is differentiating it between one business and the other, and I think I'll let her clarify to that.
Commissioners, and I think Joanne can speak to this, there's nothing in the code requirements prohibiting the multiple signage and different identification of the businesses, and when the application was submitted for the sign, if you look at Attachment Number Three in your agenda packet, the lessor of the property clearly is allowing the sign applicant the ability to have the sign on the property. So from a property owner perspective, there was no reason to reject that application and met the sign code requirements. Tonight, you're reviewing an appeal of the Director's decision approving that sign based on the sign code requirements, which do not restrict it to identification of a single owner in that property, and you are reviewing it to determine whether or not the sign requirements were met per our code, given that the property owner gave permission for this sign on that property on that side. And your decision is an appeal of the Director's decision, so your decision would be final, but anybody can request that the city council hear it on appeal, and if the city council were to accept that appeal, it would go up. So procedurally, that's how this works tonight.
And also to clarify.
Was Jolly Bee informed of the new policy being in place by the city?
They, they were not, they were not informed, but again, they attempt, they did submit an application for the sign, so they, they knew that they, they were allowed to put a sign there in that same location.
So I guess the question comes in is, are we setting a precedence with one buildings with many signage, and how many? I, I mean, this would be the second one. That is a big, tall building, and does that mean that, you know, it can just continue going down the line?
The signage is not considered, okay, so the code allows for one signage for every building frontage, and this is, this, the south side is a street frontage, so the code does allow one sign. The code doesn't say what the sign has to be of. It just, it just says that it allows one sign per street or per frontage, so.
So we're not setting precedent, we're following code.
So this is.
So one sign, is that not one sign where Jolly Bee's at?
One sign per frontage.
So.
So it has frontage on Berenca.
And then this is the other frontage. That's a frontage facing Berenca, and this is the frontage facing North Garvie Avenue East.
So that particular building has four frontage, so they can technically have four signs up there?
Yes.
And to identify a building, so you can say that is the Jolly Bee, that is the PK Schreifer LLP, that's a blah, 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 and that's a blah, 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 for a building. I mean, that's just unheard of. Normally, there's one building, one signage to ID a building. I just can't imagine go down your finger, one, two, three, four, to name one building. Anyway, just, I thought, okay.
Any other questions?
Is both parties here today?
Commissioner, yes, there's representatives from both parties.
Paulina, has there ever been more than one sign on this building, or Joanne?
I'm sorry?
Has there ever been more than one signage?
It was previously Wells Fargo Building, that's all. Yes, so it's, it's typically for signage, signage is allowed based on, what type of signage is allowed is based on typically the code, and also what the property owner would allow on, on their building.
This time, we, well, do we have anyone who, from the public, who would like to speak on this? So we'll hear from the applicant. Excuse me, you have one?
Could you please come up to the podium, sir?
We're going to hear from you after the.
The appellant.
The appellant first? Okay. Then Rick, come on up.
Can you guys hear me okay with this? Good evening. I'm excited to be here because you guys have an opportunity to do something, something I'm going to tell you a quick story about how the City of Los Angeles Planning Commission changed the horizon, and you are going to think of this night's meeting when Rick told you about this for a long time, because every time you see the horizon line of Los Angeles, you'll see what's different. 1974, there was a movie that came out, it's called The Towering Inferno. You guys all looked pretty young, and I doubt that you would even remember it, but it was a story of a 94-foot glass tower that burned, and it scared the chief, the fire chief for the City of Los Angeles. And he went to the Planning Commission, and he got the Planning Commission to change the way they build high-rises in the City of Los Angeles. When you go to New York, Chicago, Atlanta, you see peaked buildings, don't you? When you go to Los Angeles, they're flat, and they're flat so a helicopter can land on. So my point is, they've got a system in place because they had a vision. The Planning Commission made this happen. We're asking you guys to make this happen for your city. What we're asking of you is that you request of the landlord to do a plan sign program. And I agree with you, you, we don't want a bunch of signs. Do a study, submit the study with the plan sign program, stay within the limitations of the city, and that way you can control how many people, how many names are on the top of a building. One other thing, play a game when you've got kids in your car or something. You're driving down the street, and you look up at the building, and you say, you guys think that Wells Fargo owns that building, or are they just a tenant? Do you think Lance Palmer owns that building, or are they just a tenant? There's a perception that whoever's name is at the top of the building is the owner of that building. When Jolly Bee was looking for international corporate headquarters, that's what they were looking for, something exclusive. I'm going to go back to LA. Part of, what I had to turn in was a, an accounting of this high-rise signs in the City of Los Angeles. There's only 35 high-rise signs in Los Angeles that are in the downtown corridor. So what I'm saying is, it's very limited. If you're, if you're looking to have an international headquarters, there's very few places to go, and they chose your city. They chose West Covina to be their international headquarters. So I'd like you to use your power, your strength, your vision, and ask the landlord to provide the plan sign program so that you can better control.
I'm just going to go ahead and fix that.
That's it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Joseph Dundee Jollibee, Representative?
Good evening, Chair Becerra, Vice Chair Lewis, Commissioner Gutierrez, Commissioner Heng, Commissioner Williams. I feel like I'm becoming more and more familiar with this building. I think this is my second time in person, three times if you count the virtual hearing that I, where I represented Jolly Bee for the store that we were building across the street from our corporate HQ. They sent me here, not part of the legal department, I'm not part of our architectural and design department. I guess at the end of the day, Jolly Bee wanted to simply bring a message of, you know, transparency and aiming to, besides the kind of dry letter we sent, basically giving a little context to what we're really trying to say here. So if I might, again, if you will permit me to read very briefly what we said, points one to three, and then I'll add a little bit to it, and I promise not to take up too much of your time. I know you're all busy, you've had busy days, and probably more busy, more work tomorrow. So number one, we, Jolly Bee believes that adding a different entity sign on the building would unintentionally cheapen the image of the building and the surrounding commercial area, making the whole building look like a billboard instead of a corporate HQ. Now, notice, we said like, we're not saying it's a billboard. We understand, you know, our tenants, PK Schreifer, we have respect for them, we understand what they're trying to do. In fact, we don't mind them having a sign on the building, but we understand that the commission, although you cannot control content, you can control the location, not just the size, not just the color, but the location. So if, let's say, the tenant, our fellow tenants want to put a sign, an eyebrow sign on the bottom of the building, which we believe is more appropriate anyway, we're not against it. It's when you add too many signs, as Commissioner Heng said, now you muddy the whole aesthetic and the whole harmony of the design of the building. So people are going to say, oh, let's meet at the what building now? So that's one concern. The second concern, as was mentioned by Rick earlier, is that, you know, we plan to stay in West Covina for the long term. We signed a 10-year lease with extensions. My job when we negotiated this was definitely to look to the future of expansion and bringing in more people. We purchased Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf Smash Burger because, again, we're planning to build this whole, this, this, this set of concepts, and we plan to make the center more or less, at least for the Jolly Bee brand in West Covina. Now, imagine for a second, and this is at the moment unlikely, but it is not impossible, say, five years from now, this landlord, which we have a good relationship with, decides to call it quits and sell the building to a different landlord, who might not have us good taste. Say, for example, our neighbor's PK Schreifer decide, you know, well, we want to relocate to Santa Monica, not in West Covina. Somebody's going to take that new sign on the south side, somebody's going to be our neighbor. I understand you cannot control content, but what if it's Pornhub.com? What if it's WeWantToGoRodeo.com? You understand the reluctance now that Jolly Bee fears might happen in the future if we indeed, as a family-oriented company, have to have signage right beside potential signage that's not as appealing. So we're, we're saying that, let's avoid this problem for the future, let's keep the consistency of the building. Now, as to the last point, we, we cannot pinpoint exactly how we were informed. My design team told us in the real estate department that, Joseph, we've already applied for all available square footage of signage in that building, east and west. In fact, we thought we would only get the west side. Back then, the Planning Commission was kind enough to point out that, why not take the east side as well, since it's also facing the freeway? We said, yes, we'll, we'll do what we can, we applied, we got it. But then we were told that, okay, that's it, there's no more signage left, you have it all. So we said, okay, we're, we're not going to be greedy and grab all four sides. So we were, we were under that assumption. Now, do we have a paper trail, an email trail? We don't. At this point, we're simply, we would like to also point out that, when you look at old Google Map pictures, Wells Fargo only had two signs, the east and the west, no other signs. I guess even then, aesthetics and good taste and harmony of the building was already a consideration. So that is our appeal to the Planning Commission, and we hope that, at the very least, you will consider what we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Commissioner.
I have a question. It's just, just an idea, do you think if you had the opportunity to have a meeting with the landlord and, and, what do you call it, PK Schreifer LLP, that, that a possible resolution could occur at a later time?
Absolutely, that would, that would not be outside the realm of possibility. We have talked to the landlord, they're, they're good people, you know, they, they're trying their best to, my guess is, have, you know, an extra income stream, we get it. We. We were frankly a little surprised when it all happened that, oh, suddenly the south side is available, and, oh, we already, landlord informed us that they approved another tenant to get it. We had always assumed in good faith that they would approach us first with an offer, like, hey, Joseph, would you like that south side signage for Jollibee so it's a more unifying picture? Oh, by the way, we'll charge you $3,000, $5,000. We were open for negotiations, and we never got there, unfortunately. Now, does that mean that any future discussions are out of the realm of possibility? No, I think, Commissioner, we're absolutely open to it. Jollibee's way of doing business is win-win, and, you know, we're willing to talk to PK Schreifer, we're willing to talk to the landlord. We're just really, at the end of the day, we're just saying aesthetically, also, what's pleasing to the community? You know, on the side of the south side, you have a lot of residential apartments. They're going to see this, they're going to say, okay, this is confusing. So, and again, the precedent for the future. How many signs do you want up there at the end of the day?
I would assume that if, obviously, as growing up in West Covina, I know Jollibee has been in our community for tons of years off of Susa and Amar, and I would assume that if Jollibee knew that they were going to move their corporate offices to West Covina, to a building, that they were, at that time, told that the other side of that building may be a different name, I'm sure you guys would have reconsidered that move.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much for answering my questions.
Commissioner Williams, did you have any questions for?
Yes, I do.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
At the time that you signed your lease, you were, I guess, the business owner was told to contact the city. And actually, there were four sides on the building. And ultimately, I guess, you guys initially were going to take either the east or west side, and then when you came before the commission, they suggested that you take another side that could be seen east or west on the 10 freeway, which is what you have now, correct?
Yes, Commissioner. When we first had discussions with building ownership, and then subsequently with the city, it was always our, not just impression, but we were told multiple times that, this used to be the Wells Fargo building, look at the pictures, there's a sign on the east and there's a sign on the west. Ideally, from a real estate standpoint, we would have wanted every side to have a Jollibee sign. But we were realistic, and we, as I've said, we were reasonable, you know, we didn't, we were told that, once you apply for that, depending on how big the letters on your sign are going to be, the square footage, that kind of limits you on how many more sides you can take. That was what we were told, more or less. And so, we said, okay, let's get the biggest sign we can on the west side with the logo. So when we finally presented, the commission was kind enough to approve that, but then they also suggested, they said, you know, Jollibee, there's the east side that used to have the Wells Fargo sign, why don't you apply for that as well? Might as well. And so we said, oh, thank you very much, planning commission, we'll do it. And so, here we are with those two signs. But we always, had we known that there would have been a possibility for the south side to be available as well, we probably would have gone for it.
Yeah, because the ordinance section 26-341 talks about signage for office buildings, including institutional uses. And it does indicate that with the building, as far, as long as its identification, that it allows one sign per facing wall, whether it's facing a street or a parking lot. And so I guess my other question is, I'm under the impression you guys were working with the sign contractor, and I noticed that you mentioned you wanted the biggest sign that you were able to have.
Yes.
And apparently, the east and west side allowed for that.
Yes, yes. But we, again, we, our impression, maybe we were wrong, was that, based on the information we had at that time, once we applied for the maximum available signage on the east and west, there would be no more available for the south. And, you know, the north was never in question. Now, there was mention about lower, like an eyebrow sign on the street level, on the first story, and we dismissed that. We said, hey, somebody else can take it, you know, another tenant. We, again, we didn't want to be greedy, we wanted to be good neighbors. So if another tenant came in and said, hey, can we put a sign on the lower end? We were okay with that. It was just the upper part of the building where you have that corporate identity that we were aiming for, that we were really guarding. And so this, again, we could have been wrong, we might have dropped the ball and missed that south side availability. So hence, when we actually, when we found out that somebody had applied for it, we scrambled and tried to apply as well. And here we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Heng, have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we will hear from Paul Schaefer. I'm sorry, did I spell it right?
I'm Max Schrefer, how's it going?
Nice to meet you.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you for taking the time out of your evening to listen to our opinions and the whole appeal process. First off, I think this whole scenario with the sign is pretty simple. I think it goes down to two issues. One, whether the sign is code compliant, which, as we've been shown today, it is. The commission approved it, and obviously, everyone has a right to appeal the sign, but under the code of the city, it's been granted, and it is code compliant. And I believe one of the commissioners today said that another building was approved with another two signs on the building. So it indicates there's some precedent with the city of approving this kind of, I guess, application for a sign. And secondly, going to the content of the sign, as this woman over here, sorry, I didn't get her name, said that the city's not allowed to regulate the content. And I think it boils down to Jollibee's appeal letter, which I think everyone has a copy, was kind of eye-opening in respect to PK Schreifer, mainly because they quoted the word "diluting of the identity." PK Schreifer's been around in West Covina for 20-plus years. That's where my father started the business, where we still have it throughout the whole 11th floor. We've employed a number of West Covina residents, other residents outside the city, and we've done community outreach as well. And the notion that having our name on a building that we've been tenants of for 20-plus years in good faith is a little insulting. I mean, Jollibee's been here for a little over a year, and that's great. We have no issue with them being on the building, and they're definitely entitled to having their sign, which is under the contract. However, the contract language that they've signed doesn't entitle them to a north and south-facing sign either. And our efforts to go to the city and get approved was in good faith, and the approval of their sign is contingent upon the property owner. And I understand that you made the argument, what happens if there's multiple signs? It dilutes the whole appearance of the building, and it could avalanche into having other sign, or other buildings with multiple signs. It goes down to the point of, the building owner provides that approval. It's not just a unilateral action of a company by saying, we want our sign on the building. It boils down to the owner approving it. And back to my point with the word "diluting," in their letter, they said that, if we were to have our sign on the building, it would make a potential for future expansion less appealing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but Jollibee's opening a new store or a restaurant directly adjacent to the building, and this became, broke ground in the last year. I think Jollibee is world-renowned, it's a famous food chain, and to say that we can't have our name on a building because we're not related in the cuisine market is a little ridiculous. I don't think we see buildings with two signs having to match the same industry. I think that's just up to the building owner, and it also promotes entrepreneurship, it promotes businesses, especially small businesses, wanting to promote themselves in the community. And Jollibee's expert kept using the word "exclusive" in ownership, trying to represent the building as owned by Jollibee, and it misrepresenting to the public, oh, Jollibee owns this building, when they don't. And this word "exclusivity," it's kind of noting that Jollibee wants to have a monopoly over the city, just, we want to be known as Jollibee, the entity that controls West Covina. And for us, having our sign on the building is more of a, it's pride, and to promote that we're from West Covina, we have business globally, and we're proud of that. And we live in South Hills, right down the street, and we're proud to be from West Covina. And to compare our name to a pornography website is kind of a little ridiculous, to be honest. I think, coming here today, we wanted to become, come in good faith and say, listen, we have the right under the law, we have the right under our contract, and our sign is promoting a law firm. It's not promoting a sleazy website, it's not promoting a sleazy business. It's a wholesome company that employs families and everyone. So, I think, I don't want to ramble too much longer, but I think we deserve this sign. I think we've been here for a long time, and we've given back to the community a lot, and we love this community. And my father strives to involve us more and more through community outreach and other avenues as well. So, I really hope this commission follows their recommendation about rejecting the appeal, and I do appreciate you guys taking the time today to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Maxwell? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that was me, that's Paul.
Okay, so Paul would like to come forward.
Mr. Schrefer, if you could speak into the microphone, we do need it to get on. Thank you. Like you're in court, just talk like you're in court.
Thank you, thank you. And again, thank you, and I'll just stand on top of what my son just said. And for everybody here, part of the city, and doing the great things that you do, I don't want to brag a lot, but, okay, I'm bragging. We're a great law firm, okay? We do things for other people, represent Universal Studios, Lloyds of London, Airbnb, all of those things, and guess what? We're a little law firm in West Covina, and we've been here for, as my son said, a long, long time. We have a lot of pride, not only in the city, in the building, but, I don't want to say anything mean or negative, but for a fancy company to come in and, in my opinion, kick our face off of the side of this building, after we've been here for 20 years, loving this town, employing people, and then to say, and that's going to be gone, and we're going to take over the joint? That impacts me a lot of ways, not only with our law firm, but in general with the city. And I could go along and probably say a lot of bad things, I mean, bad words and stuff like that. But, yeah, we stand firm in where we are, in this town, in our firm. And, you know, I could go to Big Downtown, I could go to Out of the Beach, I could go to Beverly Hills with this firm, who we represent, and go there, right? And be in the fancy places, and guess what? We're staying in West Covina. I started this firm over 20 years ago, and I was downtown. And I married my wife, her family was in West Covina. And I thought, well, after I'm married, and my beautiful wife for a year, we're going to move to fancy downtown. Guess what? We didn't. We stayed, and I absolutely love the town, and raised my son, Maxwell, and he's very proud to be here. He could go anywhere to work, downtown, fancy law firms, all that. And guess what he did? Stays here. So, in any event, I've probably talked too much already, but thank all of you, what you do for our city, and also for taking the time to listen to this. And I think you can kind of tell I'm a little emotional right now. When I'm in a court, I'm usually, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, blah, 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 I represent Universal Studio, but I am, I don't think I've been like this in 20 years. So, anyway, all right, enough talking like that, get to the point, Schreef. And the point is, rely on you to do what's right. And that's all I can say right now. And again, thank you for all you do, not only for this right now, but for all of our great city.
I have a question. I have a question. Yes, quick question. Will you be open to discussing this matter further with Jollibee?
Of course.
Yes, okay. And when we, I mean, we're, obviously, I hear you and I hear them, and, I mean, just out of a general idea, it's just like if, let's just say, City National Bank has their tower, and then, let's just say, another company comes out and wants the other side of their building. I'm sure any applicant in downtown LA will also be angry at the idea that a building that they thought may have been exclusive to them, the signage may be, I mean, they may not be happy with that idea that another company's going to be taking the other side of that building for whatever reasons they may have. But, yeah, I just wanted to ask if you were open to that, and it's great to know that. So, thank you.
Commissioner Williams, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I don't.
Okay. No other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Lewis?
Should I go sit down?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
If there's no further questions or staff comments regarding the matter, I would entertain a motion to support staff's recommendation.
Chair, before you close, public comment, just for the record, make sure there's nobody else wishing to speak on this matter.
I have some comments. Okay, yeah. I would just urge that, since there's two applicants who've been in our city for so many years, I don't think it'll be a bad idea just to let them see if they can resolve the matter, sorry, resolve the matter internally first. It wouldn't be a bad idea to give them that option and allow them to come back at the next meeting, and, I mean, between that time, they could notify city staff of if a resolution was, has been reached. But if not, then obviously, we have to vote in the best interest and accordance to the code. But the code also gives us the right to say, let them talk it out, and let's give them that chance, since there's two applicants here who have been in our city for so many years. So I would just urge my colleagues to give them that opportunity.
Is that something that both parties would entertain?
Yeah, we could bring it back at the right, the next following meeting that's coming When's the next meeting, Chief of Staff?
I believe it's October 26th.
Okay. October 25th?
Let me double-check, though. Sorry, Commissioner. Yes, October 26th would be the next planning commission meeting.
What kind of resolution are you guys talking about?
It was just an idea on myself that maybe there's an opportunity for you guys to sit down at a table at your offices, and maybe there's a chance to speak it out and see if there's any other options between you both to resolve this matter, and then obviously, at the next meeting, this commission is going to follow the code and vote based upon the code. But we want to give the opportunities, because I know you both have been here for so many years, I grew up in our city, so I know both of you have been here so many years, and I was just encouraged, both of you, just to sit down at the table and see if a resolution's possible in any way, shape, or form. Obviously, I can't encourage which way and how to make a settlement, or which way, how to do it, but I could just say that maybe off a meeting that you both could have, that maybe a resolution could occur, and as long as you both are open to that, I would love to make a motion on that matter and bring it back right on the 26th, at the upcoming commission meeting.
In the event we don't reach resolution, just given the starkly different...
In the event we don't reach a resolution, just given the starkly different...
Uh, I, under the Brown Act, I can't tell you how we'll vote, but I can say that this commission and, well, myself and I'm sure my colleagues will as well, vote the pa, vote based upon the code. And if the code says what, what the code says, then this commission has to vote based upon the code. So I could, I could give you that, that idea, yeah.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have one more question. So, realistically, if you're gonna go back and try to, um, resolve this between you, what are your alternatives? No sign or low sign? I mean, if, if that's not an option for you, then we need to vote this tonight. I motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll make the second a motion.
Paul, so, uh, if they were to sit down, I'm sure they could talk about maybe a monetary compensation, we can't really go into the negotiations of what they do.
Go ahead, Chair.
I would like to make a motion as well.
We have a motion to approve.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I can clarify, is your motion to, uh, deny the appeal at first house recommendation or to approve the appeal?
I'm sorry, can you say that?
I wanted to, if I can clarify the motion, is it to, uh, deny the appeal and uphold the director's approval or to approve the appeal?
No, we're approving the sign.
Okay, so, so then you are, um, your motion is to deny the appeal this evening? Okay. Thank you.
So we have a motion in a second, but does Commissioner Gutierrez have a substitute motion?
Yeah, I have a substitute motion that we give the applicant, um, did city staff say you were gonna bring back an emergency meeting prior to the October 26th meeting?
No, we only, the next meeting is the October 26th meeting.
So my motion is that we bring this back on October 26th and that we do due diligence, because I know, uh, the council has, uh, supports both companies, uh, and so to, uh, to give a fairness in this process, that I would encourage my colleagues to give both applicants the opportunity to sit down in a confidential discussion that they could have between themselves, um, since I can't give them and tell them how to settle this or if a resolution is that, maybe, maybe Jollibee's off, willing to offer money and, and maybe allow, I mean, a resolution to lower the sign somewhere else or something like that. I can't obviously give specifics on that because that's not my duties to do that, but I can say that I would encourage my colleagues to give both these applicants who have been in our city for so many years, the chance to sit down and see if a resolution's possible, um, and so forth.
And excuse me, Commissioner, we've heard from one side, I think we should hear from the appellant to see if they're open to this continuance as well.
Okay.
Uh, real quick, I didn't give my decision, the resolution idea. I spoke with Paul, the principal of the, the law firm, and, um, it's not really a matter of compensation or money of any sign, of any sort. For us, we just wanna have our sign up there because we've been here for so long. And you spoke about fairness and I think, for us, it's pretty fair if, if the terms that as tenants we signed to the agreement, if it lays out these, uh, terms that say Jollibee's entitled to two signs?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not telling you guys how to set, I mean, how to discuss a, a meeting, but what I'm saying is, they're saying that they've been told that they were given exclusive rights to the building, uh, by the landlord. Obviously, you guys, I was, I've also been told that you have rights to that side of the building, so I would encourage, obviously, to prevent any litigation that, uh, but that's not my business. But in, in, in general, to prevent any sort of litigation between yourselves, I would encourage at least a sit-down meeting so you guys could try to see if there's a resolution. And if not, and there's not, and, and, uh, the code will be on there, but...
Uh, I guess to put a shorter answer to my long ramble, uh, we don't wanna do a judicial resolution because our position is just to have the sign, so, that's where we are.
And, and what the, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
And city staff, would this, uh, would they have a opportunity to appeal this to the city council if they wanted to?
So the, the Planning Commission's decision is final, but the city, somebody can request that the city council take it on appeal and if the city council accepts it, then it will go up.
Okay. So my motion is that we give the applicant, uh, a chance to sit down amongst themselves and to, uh, uh, see if a, uh, internal resolution is possible, since both parties are saying the opposite in what they're, what they were given the chance to apply for. And, and since one of the letters indicate that they were informed by the city that no such signage was available and because there's history that Wells Fargo, who I can remember is the only major tenant who had a sign up there, only used the front on Branca and the back of that building for their signage, and there's never been signage on the left or right side. And the last other big tenant while Wells Fargo was there was Foothill Transit and Foothill Transit actually had a sign in a lower area of the building. But that's, uh, my motion.
I actually like to second the motion with the additions that I'd like to find out to see if there's any other signs on a building, identification in terms of sign in West Covina to see if any other larger buildings with multiple signage. I, I don't recall seeing it one, except with the exception of the one that we approved a couple of years back. So I'd like to see if we, we have some type of information set with buildings.
Uh, I will like to, uh, include Commissioner Heng's comments into my motion.
Okay.
When will we be voting on both motions?
So we'll, um, vote on the motion by Commissioner Gutierrez amended by Commissioner Heng first.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Uh, Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Heng? Uh, Vice Chair Lewis? Chair Becerra?
No.
Motion does not approve. So now we will go back to your motion, um, uh, denying the appeal and upholding the community director's, uh, approval of the sign permit. Do we have a second?
We did.
We did? I apologize. Okay, so then, uh...
Commissioner Williams second.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Gutierrez?
Abstain.
Commissioner Heng? Uh, Vice Chair Lewis?
Aye.
And Chair Becerra?
Aye.
Motion passes, three, one, and then a one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any of the commissioners like to report or comment on an item? Pauline, are there any items to report to the commission?
Commissioner, uh, Madam Chair, um, I believe we are taking the residential code amendments to the next city council meeting on the 19th, as well as, um, the Amazon, um, Last Mile project will also be on the city council agenda on the 19th.
And the state of the city?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I got, and the state of the city is this Thursday, so everyone is invited. Uh, information for the event is available on our website, westcovina.org. Um, we also have a Filipino, uh, event at partnership with the Plaza West Covina Mall on October 23rd, um, with the, uh, ceremony with the city dignitaries at 2:00 PM. And we will also be hosting, um, a Halloween festival, also in partnership with Plaza West Covina on October 31st. Um, and more information for those events is on the website.
Were any actions taken by the city council or by the council that pertained to the Planning Commission?
What was taken to the last council? Oh, yes, so there was the second hearing at, uh, the last count, city council meeting for the overlay zone at the Auto Plaza. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Since there's no further business or to consider, this meeting is adjourned at 8:02 PM.